Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the October 3, 2022 work session of the Salisbury City Council. We have several items on the agenda this evening, and starting off, we'll have a -- the chief of police will be up here joining us. And the topic is the amendment for a fund budget amendment for red light camera. Chief, welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon. So coming before you today to with an ordinance, we are ready to move forward on our red light camera project. We're looking at approximately $239,000 in administrative fees during this fiscal year. And for each red light camera, and that, excuse me, that will be covered by the revenue generated by the program. That money is necessary for the equipment for the program and the administration thereof. Additionally, every citation that comes in under the program will be approximately $75, 4850 of which is goes to the city, 2650 would be for the administration of the program. We are asking to move forward on this so that we can enter into the next phase of the project.
Okay. Questions or comments from the council?
So that 2650 out of that is what we're anticipating to be the cost for the, I guess, anticipated, what we're asking for the budget amendment. That money is, is that what, or is that, is that two separate pots of money?
So the $239,000 is what the cost will be for the fiscal year. That's what we are anticipating the cost to be. And then the revenues generated through the fiscal year will cover that cost.
All right.
And as an individual breakdown for each citation, $75 per citation, the city will retain 4850 of that.
Okay. Gotcha. Thank you.
Other questions or comments?
No.
How soon is this ready, ready to go?
So we're, we're a little far out from that. The next thing that needs to happen is that the company needs to come out and assess the intersections to determine whether or not there's viability there for the intersections that we have set up. And once that happens, installation of equipment, we have been told, is not that onerous. The company also will have to, and they have done this in the past, they've done a little bit of work here in the state of Maryland on, on the other side of the bridge, but they do have to coordinate with state highway administration. So that will, that will take a little bit of time, but they're from process and they are going to handle all of that. I don't have a specific date. Once, once we get the intersections analyzed and assessed by the company, we'll get a little bit, we'll get a better, better timeline. I can certainly pass that information forward to you.
Thank you.
Sure.
Chief, one question I have is, are you just looking at five, or was it five or four?
Intersections.
Intersections.
We're looking initially at 10 different intersections.
10.
Mm-hmm.
And of those 10, we'll choose from, from the highest to the lowest? Is that how we'll do it?
So the company's going to assess each intersection.
Okay.
And determine which ones, the number of violations that occur.
Gotcha.
And determine whether or not that those intersections are essentially sustainable based on the number of violations.
Perfect. Okay. Thank you. Do we have consensus to move this forward?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, chief.
Would you like me to stay for the drug court ordinance?
Yes, why don't we do that one right now while you're here?
It is next.
Oh, it's, it is the second one. I apologize, Chief Duncan.
So this ordinance is in conjunction with the, the drug court program here in Wycombe County. The program has been awarded $5,000. We have a partial match of $4,400. The program covers cost expenditures of police officer overtime and fringe when our officers are out checking on their participants. As you know, this is a very robust program here in our county, and graduates of this program are well-suited to be very, very successful once they move on from their addiction issues. We fully support this program.
As do I. Any questions, comments from the council?
No.
Okay. We'll move it forward. Ms. Nichols, you okay?
Yeah.
Thank you. Thanks, chief. Appreciate it. Next, we have a budget amendment for general fund budget, water and sewer enterprise fund budget to appropriate funds to the Department of Field Operations and Department of Waterworks operating budgets. And Director Jana Potvin, you're already here. Good afternoon.
Over the last several months, we've noticed a difficulty in recruiting individuals with CDLs as well as retaining those. In one month alone, I lost four CDL drivers from one of my divisions. It's just a real hardship for both field operations and for Waterworks. Cory's not here to speak for her, her team, but, you know, we began discussing possibilities that we could do, what we could do to retain employees as well as recruit new individuals with CDL, CDLs. And we both came up with the idea of funding a commercial driver's license incentive, bonus incentive program. One of the things that's hurt us recently, Federal Motor Carrier Safety Administration in February of 2022 came out, the, the program was in place a while back, but it finally became effective February 2022, where the possibility for us to train in-house was going to be a little, a little more programmed. We would actually have to put our name in a database as, and get approved as in-house trainers. There's going to have to be a classroom portion of that that we would have to take, take place, and we would have to track and report. That's, it's a positive, but it has made it more difficult for us to, we've got to get that program in place so that we can begin to train new employees who don't have their CDLs. And it also, because people who had existing CDLs that wouldn't have to go through that training process became much more valuable asset to local companies and actually nationally. So today, what we've got before us is a ordinance to, for, let me see, I think it's, I'm going to get my quantities here.
168.
It's 96,400 to move from surplus into a, for field ops into a salary bonus line item, and 71,800 for Waterworks. And we would use that to pay out a $2,000 bonus for individuals who have a Class B, and 2,500 for individuals with a Class A. It would also allot a portion of money so that training could take place outside of our agency, send them to Warwick. We do not have the, a vehicle within field ops for individuals to pass a CDLA, and we do require a CDLA for certain heavier loads in our tractor trailer. So that puts a portion of that money aside specifically for training. The actual agreement, we're still working out, because this, in my conversations with administration, this is kind of a one-time thing to be ended this fiscal year. You know, I guess we can look at a next budget cycle to see if it is something that we want to repeat, but we've just got to make sure and tweak that agreement to make sure that all the funds are paid through this fiscal year, and we make sure that any reimbursements and things like that are taken, are part of that as well, and identify who are the qualified individuals. For my purpose, when I was calculating it, it was going to be those individuals that having a CDL is requirement of the job, and for those that aren't, that are active participants in snow removal that require a CDL.
Questions or comments from the council?
Jana, do you think that this would encourage drivers? Because I hear when you say you lost four, what was the reason for losing the four?
Pay.
Okay. Well, I kind of, other than some other few other little things, but.
How much was the difference in the pay?
Yeah. $10 for an hour.
Really?
Yeah, in one case, $10 for an hour.
And I, I mean, Ms. Sullivan, just finish, because I, so I would say, so if that's, that's significant. And so here's, here's the thing, if we just do a $2,000 bonus and we're training these people, all we're doing is being the stepping stone.
For them.
Unless, unless it's in the contract, unless it's in the agreement.
Well, no, but still.
But isn't an agreement to give them more money? Is that what you're saying?
We're not changing the pay rate for these people that are driving.
No.
Right? So that's the issue.
But $10 is not surmountable without a tax increase.
Oh, no, no, I, I get that, but.
But you're right.
Yeah.
It's, you're right.
That's what I'm saying.
That's the issue.
It is. Certainly, it's not just, I mean, it's, and it's, I mean, this is the same issue that we've been facing increasingly across the workforce, but, you know, I mean, look, look no further than paramedics, look no further than sanitation. Law enforcement is a different issue entirely, but, but we are, we have lost officers to different professions for a variety of reasons, but that, you know, across the workforce, we have that problem. But I think my point in, in saying it's insurmountable with respect to $10 an hour is within current means.
Correct.
Within our current means. What we can afford in the interim is to acknowledge the specific problem we're having with, with CDL licensed drivers. That is something that we think we can fix, but you're right.
But my thing is, as well, is we're saying 24 months. I truly, now, you asked me for my opinion, and I'm going to give it to you. If we're going to pay $2,000 for their training, we're going to pay for their training, I think that we should hold them to a higher standard, to more months than that.
The, the, with, when we do the in-house training, the, there is no cost other than like $185 or $200 for a classroom video. It's only when we have to go outside of Warwick, to Warwick for our Class As, and we basically follow the same payback requirements that you would for a master's or any other, other type of training outside. So the, the 24 months is strictly for the CDL bonus, that if you have a CDL, come in with a CDL, or you get it while you're on the job, but not if you get it, if you get it, if you go to Warwick to get trained, we're not going to pay you the bonus. You can't double dip, kind of thing.
I understand that, but I'm saying if, okay, you're saying they have to work for the city for 24 months if they in-house are.
If they accept it.
Huh? If they accept, yeah. I just think that we should hold it to another, I said another 12 months at least. That's me.
And I understand that. I think that there, because this is a relatively low incentive compared to what is out there, you, I would, I'm hesitant, I would be hesitant to make it longer because employees may not even say, well, I'm not going to, I'm not going to even bother because I can get $5,000 if I go to somewhere else, and I could get more money also somewhere else. If that's truly why they're leaving is for the money, you know, it's.
This isn't cash in their pocket.
And it's also taxed. I mean, it's, it's.
So is this, I mean, is this bonus not enough? That, I mean, because like you said, it's the low end of the bonus, is this, is this going to attract any, attract anybody?
Truthfully, I'm not sure. Originally, originally, this started out as a, well, don't even try to go through surplus. What can you kind of peel from your own accounts to, to fund through either employee shortages or other things like that? That was, that was the way it initially started, and the, the bonuses were closer to the 1,000, 1,500 range, because that was about all that I know I could get out of my own budget. And then it doubled, but we never really addressed whether or not it was enough to, to really recruit individuals from outside with CDLs to come, you know? But I don't know that 5,000 is the magic number, you know, I.
What's the starting pay rate for?
We're, for an individual with a CDL, they're like a 5.5, so maybe 33,000?
Can you pull that up?
I have a question, if that's.
Go ahead.
So we have this amendment in front of us asking for 96,400 and some dollars, and, and then another one for 71,800. Those are all allocated for bonus, these bonuses, these 2,500 bonuses?
And the training.
Yes. And, and training for each?
Not each employee, each individual that is required to have a CDL as part of their job, like administrative person would not, would not need.
How many employees have, are required to have the CDL?
I don't know for Waterworks, for us. I had that number.
I'm just trying to figure out where the numbers.
It's about 30 to 35, and 40, 40 in field operations, 30 to 35 in Waterworks.
Yeah. I'll tell you where the numbers came from, from me. I believe I had like, it was a, I have a certain number of individuals that have a B right now that I know would be eligible for it, and a certain number that have an A right now that would be eligible for it, and I have a certain number of people that don't have them or vacancies. And I just assumed that they would be a B. But knowing that I needed more A, A-level drivers, I asked for three positions to go to Warwick for, for that A-level training.
I think, I can see, I can see what we've done in the last month and a half, two months. And today, I actually asked if Keith could do a workup for me.
I've got that.
And a, and a.
Would you, would you like to hear that information?
Yeah, and let me just explain why, so that the mayor had made a comment, and I agree with him. The issue is not the Band-Aids, the issue is sustainability.
That's right.
And I have serious concerns, which I've, which I've spoken about with the mayor. I've, I have serious concerns about our ability to sustain this without tax increases. And I, I think everybody knows how I feel about tax increases, and I think most of the, if not all, of the people sitting at this table feel the same way. But I think we need to hear from the mayor about what Mr. Cordrey has, has put together. But down the road, and we're not alone, there's, every company that I know of is going through the same thing. My old company is going through it. And it, I don't know where all the people went, but they certainly aren't working. And if they are working, they're asking for significant increase in, in compensation. And of all the concerns that I've had since I've been on the council, this one bothers me, and this one keeps me up. So, Mr. Mayor, if you could, give us a little bit of an update.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a, it's an employees' labor market, for sure. Now, this is the time to demand more, and this is not the only place where we're hurting. You're right. So, okay, looking at FY22, which, channeling Mayor Keith, he, he would not want to advertise results pre-audit being complete, so we're not, take all of this with a grain of salt. That being said, in the course of fiscal year 2022, there were a total of $426,000 that were drawn from the unassigned fund balance, reserves used for operating, so a fairly small amount compared to most years. So those were, that's $426,000 in amendments, so those were unplanned. As far as the FY23 and our current standing, it does look like less than that is what will be our total use of surplus. So although we anticipated using 1.7 million dollars, excuse me, last year was 2.2 million dollars we anticipated using, looks more like 300,000. That's a 1.9 million dollar savings in our unsigned fund balance. We also have an update on the current position of our unassigned fund balance. It's 16.7 million currently, so much higher than it's been in recent years. That represents, represents another significant increase, which is close to four months of operating cash. As you know, our policy is that we should have at least three months, so it's more cash on hand than we are required to have, still not outside of the target range. So our target is four months, our GFOA minimum is two months, the city policy minimum is three months, so we're between three and four months, close to four months. Current, pre-audited, or our previous fiscal year unassigned fund balance would have been 12.6 million, so we're doing better than we were last year by quite a bit. A lot of the budget ordinances that came through as budget amendments, if you'll recall, those were ARP money. So while we probably all have a lot of figures dancing around in our heads of, of budget amendments we've made, that was ARP money, and that helped us remain whole and keep our budget intact. To read Keith's assessment, though, I'm going to quote this verbatim, "As I have said before, when standing still, we appear financially healthy with fund balances and cash appearing sufficient." And this is to your point, Mr. President. "Our challenge is to find revenues in future budgets that are sufficient to meet our needs." The fear is of what the future holds. So there's no doubt that while things might look acceptable today, and I wouldn't call them rosy, just acceptable, but while things look healthy today, I think next year, we will start our budgeting process with a hole before we get to any capital item, any single, even $1 for paving, before we get to any, you know, single vehicle, anything, and before we get to any item being requested in our essential items list, I think we will be looking at a $5 to $6 million budget shortfall. And operating costs have steadily risen, and we've, we've chosen that, that's a choice we've made, and that is going to continue. And so I would just urge all of us to do exactly what you're doing, which is to watch for that, and to recognize that we have to be cautious about acknowledging where the revenue shortfalls are and identifying ways to close that gap. And I think we all know where they are. We know exactly where we are providing services that are not being paid for, and we should have that conversation when you're, whenever you're ready.
Yep. I thank you. That's, that's, my number, my number was roughly the same, but maybe a little bit, a little bit worse, but not much. Yeah, and I think we're going to have to realize that when we go into this budget. This is going to be, in my opinion, and I've, it's going to be the toughest budget that I've ever worked on since I've been on the council.
Mr. President, may I make one editorial?
Sure.
That being said, the Pay Predictability Plan, the increases that were made several years ago have been made to address police recruitment and retention, the fire overtime and incentive program, the, the more significant increases in pay adopted in the FY23 budget, and this correction, I think, are all pieces of how we ensure that we don't find ourselves in a position of not being able to provide certain services, whether we're talking about fire service, whether we're talking about policing our neighborhoods, whether we're talking about sanitation, we might find ourselves in critical positions.
Oh, I totally agree.
If we don't do what we.
I totally, I totally agree with you, and I agree with everything we've done, but when the guy comes calling with his hand out, then we need to be able to put the money in there.
Oh, that's not funny.
Okay, I think I've beaten that to death. Any other questions or comments?
I would, you know, and maybe in looking at what we need for, as far as CDL employees, and I know you've got a number, almost 75 employees that were saying need, need this. I don't, I mean, maybe, you know, going back, because the issue is, if we, if these guys get them, how long are they going to stick around if we don't? So do we identify maybe a minimum number of people that we can do for operational purposes, and then select the right individuals for those positions, pay them competitively instead of trying to pay 75 people that rate?
We so lead in staff?
Yeah.
That everyone in our streets department needs, needs a CDL. Everyone in our sanitation department needs a CDL. Everyone in our parks department needs a CDL. I mean, it, it, we have, and a lot of it is, okay, well, I may just need a DOT physical because I'm driving a one-ton, but if I put a trailer on that, that means that weight is over it, and I've got to have that CDL to drive it on the public road. We're, it, it's not like I've got employees that, that, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, it wasn't my intent to present this as, as a incentive for someone who doesn't need that CDL on a daily basis, or at least during emergency operations, to get it, you know? But every employee in certain divisions in my department need it, my fleet department needs CDLs because they need to be able to drive a vehicle back, you know, if there's a problem, or drive it to somewhere to get it fixed.
So when we hire them, they didn't have their CDLs?
We tried to.
We tried, okay.
But, but it's very, when we're not, when our salaries are not competitive with some of the, all, you know, the, the, the commercial drivers that are driving for the, you know, the, the big tractor trailers and the big, you know, logistics companies.
How many have CDLs of these 75?
I, I can get you that number later. I don't have that exact number in front of me, but I've got a database with it, and I can get Cory's as well.
Yeah, if you do that, that would be helpful.
What would be the number, if, I'm just wondering, what would it be like to partner with Warwick? Would it be cheaper to train our people?
No, it's $2,800 for a Class B, 4,800 for a Class A, and they are actually, are, are filling up very, very quickly in their number of, of classroom seats that have got available. When, when this initially, Federal Motor Carrier Safety Administration came out with their guidelines, you know, I called just about everybody in the state of Maryland, you know, individual trainers, other, other community colleges, to find out if we could get, get it done cheaply and quickly. And the best way for us to do it is in-house, and we're, we're working towards that. I've just, it's being run through, our HR department is handling the Federal Motor Carrier Safety Administration database, and we've identified two staff members who will provide the on-the-road training, not the classroom training, but the job training, but it's just a matter of getting them approved. So we've been about six months delayed, so that our new employees who come without CDLs, we haven't been able to train them. And normally, they would have already had their CDLs by now.
When's Warwick's next class for graduation with the, with the students with CDLs?
I don't have that information in front of me.
I believe they don't go on the same cycle as the normal students.
No, it's, it's like a three week.
It's like a three, three, three week, three and a half week, four week.
It'd be nice to know how many are enrolled, how many are anticipating, you know, jobs after that.
Well, I, I think that, we just spoke, and I think it's clear, this is not going to, people aren't going to be knocking down our doors to do this, because they're looking at, you're looking at a CDL which will make them eligible for more money, but in the long term, they're looking at the salary, the wages. So, which goes back to the thing we just finished talking about, long-term sustainability. So this is a stopgap measure, period. So, this is a stopgap measure, period.
So, if you break it down by hour, you can go work at Walmart as an overnight stalker and make more money.
Mm-hmm.
And that's what's killing us.
Yeah.
And truly, Tri-County Council has the same, has the same issue. And, I mean, you can go work at Dunkin' Donuts for almost the same amount of money. They're paying $15, $18 an hour just to work there. Now, I love my coffee, but I don't, I don't think that, it's an imbalance in the, in the employment market right now.
And this is, this is something that I can't fix right now. I'm trying really hard to put a Band-Aid on it so I don't lose more, because when I lose four individuals out of a team of 10, that hurts, you know, in one, in one division because they were able to find employment, you know, elsewhere.
If there's four looking, there's three times more that are looking as well.
And, you know, would $2,000 or $2,500 keep them? It, it could say that I appreciate what you've got, and I value what you've got, and this is what I can offer you at this time. You know, I recognize that what you have is a certification that is valuable out there.
I agree with you. I understand, you know, your struggle, we're just, we're just, I mean, we're just trying to look 10 years down the road.
I'm, I'm looking there too, but it's.
Yeah, we, we want to make sure.
I'm looking at the next six months. I mean, forget 10 years, I'm looking what's going to happen come April. I'm just, that's where I'm looking, forget 10 years.
Right.
I mean, I'm really looking at, I mean, we're looking at 100-plus thousand dollars for bonuses, and I'm not, I'm not sure that that's the actual answer.
I think, I think, this is my opinion, I might be wrong. I don't think they're going to spend this money. I don't think you're going to find enough people to spend the money, but I do think it would help to get her more CDL drivers, even if it's five. I mean, that's what we're looking, we're trying to do, and I said, this is a Band-Aid, that's all it is. So, the other things we're talking about are exactly what I was talking about before with how we're going to pay for this, long-term.
Yeah.
And make people competitive, make ourselves competitive with other companies and businesses.
So, I guess one question I have, and I know, so if somebody comes to the city with a CDL with years of experience, and they're looking at, at the bonus, how much are we going to pay them an hour? $1,587 an hour?
We have several different, within field ops, we have a training level that says you basically have your driver's license and you have no experience in the job that you're doing. A training, a Level One, you've got a DOT physical, you're working towards that CDL. You've got it. Level Two, Level Three, you know, it all, there are different skills that you have to show that you're capable of doing. If you are a, if you have been on a road crew and you have years of experience and you have your CDL, you might come in as a field ops tech three, which is like a $515-ish.
Yeah, so you go up, we do reward experience, you're not at the bottom, at the entry level.
But typically, we don't find those individuals that have years of experience coming unless they're, you know, we just don't.
Fully understanding what we just discussed in terms of short-term versus long-term, are you willing to move this forward?
I just don't think that the bonuses are enough. I mean, I know it's a start, but do we, do we start the current employees at 5,000? I don't, I mean.
Well, for the bonus, I just think.
May I just say one thing? You might be right. No, you know, I think a million dollars might keep people here. The experts are telling you, you know, the people who hire them are telling you that this is what they need, and they're asking for the resources to give them, you know, to try to keep people in the job. You know, it's not that we wouldn't want to give more, right, if we had the resources, but we've also got a resource limitation, a resource question. I think the worst thing that can, can happen is to do nothing, you know? And the worst-case scenario, if you do this, is that it doesn't work and we need to add more. But I mean, it's at least, it's at least an effort, a shot in the arm, to, to address the concern that, you know, the people who have to do the hiring and retaining of the employees think might make a difference.
And we can also, it'll also tell us the temperature of the water out there.
Yep.
So.
I would like to, honestly, for myself, I'd like to table it and ask for us to submit our questions to either Keith or to anyone else, to just get a more broader perspective of exactly what this is. That's just my personal opinion. I mean, I agree that we need to do something. I'm just, I mean, every week now, we're looking, or every session or so, we're looking at budget amendments, and.
But I think my, my point in reading off Keith's remarks is, that's anecdotal. Let's look at the facts, and I read off the facts at the beginning, which I can, you know, I can speak to the facts of where we are in terms of our, our financial health. So, let's, let's, you know, I mean, anecdotes about, you know, we voted on a budget ordinance or a budget amendment here and there, yes, I think that's, that's true, but the bottom line is the bottom line.
And I think that what, what I want to do is I'll call, I'll call a vote on moving it forward because I believe that, you know.
It has to be done.
We need to do that.
We need to do it.
I can remember when my first boss taught me, and I think it's applicable. A good boss fights for their people, surrounds themselves with good people, provides the resources they need, and then gets the hell out of the way. And I think this is our opportunity to say, this is the, what the, what the individual needs. We have concerns about it, but if, understanding that when we go into this, we're doing it for a short-term effect. And if it works, we're going to get more CDL drivers. If it doesn't work, we have to regroup.
I agree.
Okay, okay, okay. Angela, you still, you okay or no?
I'm, I'm not okay. I, I'd rather just have, I have some questions. I'd rather see, I'd rather, for me in person, I'd just rather see it ahead of me with the, with the finances. I'd like to see in black and white what the finances look like. I hear what Mayor Day is saying. I just, I'm not saying no, I'd rather just table it until I feel more comfortable in, in seeing what, how Keith has formulated it. And I just, I understand that it's a short-term thing. It's a big ticket item for a short-term solution, and I'm not exactly sure how this is actually going to keep them here. I don't know.
Well, we have.
So, I make $10 an hour and you give me $2,000 of a bonus.
We have, we have enough, we have enough votes to move it forward.
Yes, you do.
So, we'll move it forward. And, Janet, thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Well, I hope this, well, we haven't voted on yet, but I hope, I hope that this gives the, a little help.
President, could I ask, say one thing? Just one thing. It's nothing against it. If we pass this, is there any way that we could get an evaluation of how it's progressing or if it's?
Absolutely.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Definitely. Thank you, Janet, I appreciate it. Next, we have an amendment to Chapter 1.16 of the Salisbury City Code entitled Infractions and Civil Zoning Violations, and I don't see Eric, sorry, I see Deputy Chief Obarski.
I'm here for him.
Okay.
Yeah, what I have in, in front of you is, we just recently, this past summer, filled a deputy fire marshal position, and so we realized we needed to add them to this ordinance change, and we're looking for, to grant them the authority to issue citations, both to him and our fire inspector.
So, I, as I read this, if I looking at it in the dark, we're adding both the fire inspector and the deputy?
That's correct.
And that sort of goes in line with?
The fire marshal was already on there, so we needed to add the other two. Yeah, he's right above the deputy fire marshal.
I know, but this is, they're both in black.
Yeah.
Is that?
It should be Section 1B, Number 17, should be on the second page. You see, fire marshal, then deputy fire marshal and fire inspector, 17, 18, and 19.
Both of those were, one of them was on and one of them wasn't?
Yeah, the fire marshal was originally on there.
The code as written only grants the fire marshal, which was the first position we created.
First position we created.
My question is, because usually when we, we do the changes, they're in dark, underlined.
I thought they were.
They are.
They are. The deputy fire marshal and fire inspector are bolded, underlined, because those are the two that we are adding. Fire marshal is.
Yours is not bolded.
Ours is not. It should be, it's line 50, 51.
Yeah, 50 and 51 are bolded.
And underlined.
And underlined as well.
So, so we're adding the fire inspector and the deputy fire marshal?
That's correct.
Okay, now I'm right, okay.
Thanks to, thanks to clarity provided by the Vice President this weekend, because I fired right past him on something else that we were talking about on this, not, you know, the reality is, the way our code's written just hamstrings that, that team from everybody being an effective player.
No, I'm just, I'm just talking about the way it looks here. It has nothing to do with, I totally agree with, but it's, it's the, I do read these things, and I.
We believe you.
Okay, that's, do we have consensus to move that forward?
Yes.
Okay. All right, we can move that forward, Ms. Nichols. And you're up for a second try.
Second try.
Okay, and this is to enter into contract with the Community Foundation for the purpose of accepting grant funds.
That's correct. The fire department is requesting the approval of grant funds in the amount of $2,500 it's received from the Community Foundation of the Eastern Shore. These funds will continue to support the Salisbury-Wacomico Integrated First Care Team, aka SWIFT, and their mission to provide medical transport for SWIFT patients who are otherwise unable to attend necessary medical appointments.
Questions or comments from the council?
Every penny helps.
Yes, it does.
It certainly does. This is, I think, one of the most successful programs that we've, we've got.
Yeah, and kudos to Paramc Fippen on that as well. He's the one who wrote that grant.
Oh, yeah, yep. Okay, we'll move that forward, Mrs. Nichols. Three?
Trifecta.
Trifecta.
Yeah, three.
Okay. Chief, you're up again, go.
The fire department is requesting the approval of a budget amendment in the amount of $17,205 for proceeds received from the auction sale of one of our fire department vehicles, was an international Telstar Horton ambulance that we sold.
$17,000?
$17,205.
Nice.
That's, what, which one was it? Which one was it?
It was B2?
Yeah.
B2, one of our old B2 units.
Okay. How are the new ones, by the way?
Wonderful.
I've heard good things from the EMT, so.
Wonderful.
That's good.
Yep.
And does it prove out in the mechanic shop?
That's correct.
Perfect. The EMTs should be happy, and they should, shouldn't cost us a lot of money to maintain. That's great. Any other questions from the council or comments?
No.
All right, Chief?
Thank you.
I think we'll go through comments now, and then we'll go into, we have a closed session, and I'll read that after we, we have the announcements. Mr. Mayor, any comments for the good of the order?
Give me one second, apologies.
No problem.
Okay, the, the one thing that I want to mention is October 15th is the next date that we are targeting for a community build at Ann Street Village. This will be a painting day, so bring your painting smocks, I don't know, but come prepared to, to paint, you know, tell your friends, I think we could use a crowd. As you know, that's, it sounds like easy work, but, you know, we got to do a couple, we'll have to do a couple coats. So, that Thursday, we might also be looking for a couple of people to come out and help tape off in order to, to do the painting. But Saturday, the 15th, I think, starting at 10:00 a.m., will be the community painting event at Ann Street Village. That's all I got.
Great, thank you. Mr. Boda?
Actually, I don't really have anything, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Jackson?
Me either. I'm, don't do it. I'm fine.
Ms. Blake? Don't forget, you see the thing on the news?
Right, I did. Well, then, you know, thank you. You know, due to the hurricane, Ian, we really have a, a countrywide shortage. We have a one-day supply, our whole country is a one-day supply of blood. I can't imagine anyone not realizing how urgent that is. If you are healthy enough, please donate blood. Thank you.
Angela, Michelle?
Just get your booster.
I am, tomorrow.
Excellent. Good news.
Okay, I just echo what Angela says regarding the blood. There's going to be a lot of rain tonight, a lot of wind, so tie things down. I had a chair that almost blew off the deck, and I had it upside down, and so, watch out and be careful. Anything that can fly is can, can hurt or kill. So, with that, I will now read the statement about a closed session. The Salisbury City Council, at approximately 5:10 p.m., upon adjournment, the council will convene in closed session to discuss a matter directly related to a negotiating strategy or the contents of a bid or proposal in accordance with the Annotated Code of Maryland, Section 3-305B14. At this time, I'll enter, entertain a motion to go into closed session.
So, move.
Second.
Mr. Boda? All those in favor of going to closed session, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're now in closed session. Thank you, everyone. If there's no other, since there are no other items on the agenda, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.